Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Patsy Fody. He was over a forty-year employee of the city of Middletown. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you. Roll call.
Graham Kassoon. Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean-François.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez is absent. We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes.
Tonight we have minutes from the common council meeting from February 5th and the common council meeting of February 19th.
Motion by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Graham Kassoon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone that wants to speak, please come up to the mic, identify yourself, and please keep it to a maximum of four minutes. Going once, going twice. Okay. Remarks of department heads. Economic development.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we had our meeting of the Community Development Agency and the Audit Committee, and we had a presentation of our audit and annual reports. That all went fine and looking to submit it to the state. Also, on Friday, we closed on the TD Bank Building to South Street, so to Equilibrium Brewery. That's gonna be their second location, so we're all excited to see their plans come to fruition and the building, a nice reuse of the building in our downtown. Just wanna give a plug. We got a lot of exciting upcoming events coming at the Paramount Theater. This Friday, we have Andy Cooney's Irish Cabaret selling very well. Tickets are still available. This Friday at 7:30, we have a great tribute band coming in April, Almost Queen, and then the Middletown Fire Police, all these shows in May. And then we have a show announcement of a comedy night in May, and it's Anthony Rodeo and Friends. Those tickets will be going on soon. Also, don't forget, we showing movies seven days a week, and those are going very well. And also, our 2018 Spring Classic Series has been released. You could go on our website, MiddletownParamount.com, and see all the great things coming up at the theater. And also, we are planning, it's summer concert series time, and all those things are getting planned as we speak, and then that announcement and listing will be out very shortly. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Ms. Bruni?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. I'm gonna be very brief. Of course, our guys, they continue to do very well with the snowstorms, plowing city streets and with water main breaks and the other duties that we have. And now we have to start attending to potholes. So if you see something drastic, please give us a call at DPW, 343-3169, for any potholes that you notice. But, you know, it's gonna be temporary effects until the blacktop plants open up. Before you tonight also, we have the screw pump bid awards. And we moved very fast in order to put this before you tonight. The project has been funded already, and we have a grant from the state as well to help funding it. So I will wait until, if you have any questions, when the resolutions comes up, I'll be happy to answer them, but there are five screw pumps altogether. And the material supplying the screw pumps is about $1.6 million. And that's, the award is gonna be to Ovaqua, if you do concur with it. Installation of the screw pump is gonna be by Boys' Excavation for an alternate bid. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them when this comes up.
Any questions for Commissioner Twill? Commissioner, thank you. Fire Chief.
Good evening, everybody. We do have a resolution on the agenda, although the engine one that we currently have that's on the agenda isn't serviced yet. So we might need an amendment to this resolution, so.
You wanna explain that?
All right. The new engine one is in.
Right.
We're still doing training on it. Spartan is coming back on the 13th and 14th for training. And then it goes to Campbell the week following for mounting of the tools. And then it will be back by the end of the month. And that's when we'll take the old one out of service and put the new one in service. So if the resolution would read something to the fact that when it's deemed surplus, that we donate it to Hancock, which is a, it's a very small department upstate New York. They heard about our truck by word of mouth. They've been down twice. They looked at it. They were here again Monday night. They said they are definitely interested in it. And resale on fire trucks are extremely hard. We tried selling Truck 3, and it's still sitting today. So rather than see it go for scrap, we'd like to see another department use it.
Any questions for the Chief? Chief, thank you very much. Treasurer.
I have nothing this evening unless anybody has any question.
Any questions for the Treasurer? Treasurer, take care. Thank you. Police Chief.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things this evening. The police department just recently signed on with an organization called Hope Not Handcuffs. It's actually brought to your attention by Alderman Tobin. We did a little research into it and found that it was a very good non-for-profit organization to partner with. So I'm just gonna read a little overview of what the program actually entails. And I will be going live here in the next week or so. As of tomorrow afternoon, the whole entire department will be trained and familiar with the program. So Hope Not Handcuffs is based on the Police Assistance Addiction and Recovery Initiative, which is a parry program, which was originated in Gloucester, Massachusetts by a police department. So Middletown Police Department is pleased to announce our participation in Hope Not Handcuffs program. We're excited to be able to offer this resource to our community and open our front door as a first step in recovery for drug and alcohol addiction. Anyone seeking help in the fight of drugs or alcohol addiction may come to the Middletown Police Department and ask for the Hope Not Handcuffs program. They will be treated with compassion and respect. A call will be made to an angel volunteer from the Hope Not Handcuffs team, who will actively seek out a treatment plan. Individuals suffering from addiction will instantly gain an advocate and a network of resources designed to lead them to success. Hope Not Handcuffs is a proactive approach to reach out to people struggling with drug addiction, to encourage them to seek recovery and regain control of their lives. Hope Not Handcuffs is a program of the tri-county community partnership, is aimed at bringing law enforcement, community organizations, and volunteers together to find viable treatment options for individuals seeking help to reduce dependency with substance, including heroin, prescription drugs, and alcohol. Since its inception, Hope Not Handcuffs, founded in Michigan, has expanded to incur over seventy police departments in nine counties, and has successfully connected with more than 2,450 participants. After sitting down with the representatives from the organization, I felt it was a no-brainer for us to open our doors and extend our resources to members of our community that are suffering with other substance addictions. This isn't a substitute for someone that's been arrested. This is for people that are seeking, willingly seeking, help with their addiction. It's not a substitute to get them out of trouble. Any questions?
Any questions for the Chief? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation.
Good evening. Actually, that Hope and Handcuffs program is a wonderful program. We're very familiar with it, and I think that'll be great here in Middletown. For the public, we are totally doing online registration at this point. It is so far going pretty smoothly. We have to thank George and the finance office, and Don Bass and John for getting us up and started and running. The public is liking it. You can also come to our office, and we would help you make a profile and set it up. We have some Chromebooks there to do that. So we're making it very accessible to the public, even if they don't have the proper materials at home. So you'll hear a lot more on that. Our spring registration is open now, and so is summer registration for all of our summer programs. So that's going on. Let's just hope for some nice weather this spring. We have a lot of projects you're gonna see done that we couldn't get done in the fall. And lastly, I just wanna wish our boys varsity basketball team good luck tomorrow. They'll be playing in the Section 9 championship against Kingston up in New Paltz. And we wish Jim Kelly, John Merchant, and all their boys a really good time and good luck representing Middletown up there. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Superintendent. City Clerk.
The municipal ID program is ready to start. We're gonna be starting in our office on March 13th at 9:00 AM. We're all set. Everything's been put together. Everything's been practiced. I think we're ready to go. It's already on the website. The applications are on the website, and we're ready to start on that 13th of March. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Public hearings and grievances.
Tonight, we have a public hearing for a two-lot subdivision for 10 to 22 Railroad Avenue. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, on or as near 8:00 PM as possible, Common Council Chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision for 10 to 22 Railroad Avenue, Section 31, Block 2, lots 18.2 and 20.2. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. The complete proposed map of the property for the two-lot subdivision was available in the office of the Common Council Clerk, City Hall, 16 James Street, Room 12, and this was by the order of the Common Council. This was published in the Times-Healed Record on February 25th and February 26th, and also on our city website.
Thank you, John. Please, come up, make your presentation.
Amador, for the record, you have the mailings.
I do, sir. Shall I deliver them?
Give them to Karen, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Amador Laput, Felonzer Engineering. I'm here with Mark Felonzer and Zane Grunewald, also with Felonzer. We are representing Hudson Transit, doing business as Coach USA. And this is part of a project that's been going on for a decade or so. The Middletown Transportation Center project. We received site plan approval last year, and it would renovate the Coach area where their buses are now, and develop that into a multi-bus depot, and renovate all the parking areas as well. So tonight, we're here to subdivide the Descalles property, which is home to Coney Island and the Coach USA ticket office, smoke shop, and there's a taxi office there. So the Descalles family would retain ownership of the property where the restaurant and building is located, and then they're gratuitously dedicating the remainder of the lot to the east of the building, where the ticket office door is, that side of the building, to the city of Middletown, to facilitate the rest of the project. And one important reason for that is that with the Middletown Transportation Center being federally funded, one requirement is that all the improvements be done on municipal property. So all of the improvements, including a new canopy, they'll be going over the existing door at the Coach ticket office, would be part of that project and need to be on municipal property. So we show here the lot line, and it's not a straight line because of the nature of where the improvements are taking place. And then we also show an easement to the side of the building, where it would be an area where both passengers and customers could walk from Railroad Avenue to the ticket office, from the ticket office out to the parking lot. So that's the easement area on that side. There's also shown a sub-license agreement at the back of the building to allow the Descalles family to maintain the back of the building, but it's handled not as an easement, but as a sub-license. The license will be between the city of Middletown as the licensor and the Hudson Transit as the licensee. And that hasn't been signed yet, but those agreements are in process. And after the approval, hopefully, of the subdivision, we'll go on with the building permit process and bidding, and we hope to do that this summer. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? Please. Any council members? Any questions? Alderman Kleiner?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanna mention that in Alderman and Green's planning committee, we did go over this lot line change, and we had questions about the maintenance of the sidewalk and such, and that's gonna be reflected in the resolution. But this was well discussed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Petitions and complaints.
Nothing this evening.
Remarks of the Mayor. Mr. Mayor, please.
Good evening, Acting President Massey and members of the council. One thing that Amador did not touch on also is that the short line, or the Coach USA portion of the project, will also have the Heritage Trail coming in from one end and out through the back end, and crossing over to Orchard Street. So it's a very important component of the Heritage Trail. So all the more reason why to approve the project. Mr. Massey asked for a moment of silence for Patsy Fody, also known as Fody to many of us who grew up in the first ward. And as I told his wife and daughter Rosemary, he was quite the character. And many of you who watched meetings knew he was quite the character. And he took with him a lot of knowledge about the city water system. And he surely will be missed. He was part of that generation of characters, as I told Rosemary. But he did have in his heart the best interests of Middletown, and our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. I also wanted to touch on tonight, which is a very exciting project regarding the Parks and Recreation Program. And up on your board, you'll see the new Parks and Recreation Campus. As you know, we've been focusing a lot on recreation programs throughout the city, but we've worked very closely with the state of New York and Governor Cuomo's office in the ability to expand recreation programming to our community and to the greater Middletown community. There we go. The, this, where it says Former New York State Start Center on the screen, this is a 15.4-acre campus. It houses several buildings on it, including the main building, which I'll get to here in a second. As you see, that's the entire campus, including ball fields. It borders California Avenue on the top of the photo and County Route 78 to the front, and then Mount Hope Road on the lower section. This is the ball field, soccer field, and baseball field that was present there. This is the main building of the Start Center. It's a brick building, in excellent condition, about 11,000 square feet, and we're proposing that this will be the new home of the Middletown Recreation Department. I met with the recreation staff today. I have kept Chris informed, as we've kept you informed, of different options. As you know, we were looking at different options for this property that, for reasons that, they did not happen. We were originally looking at the Kleiner Center on the community campus as an opportunity to expand recreational services to a more campus-like setting. And the preliminary numbers on that were pretty huge. But when I get to the end of this, I'm gonna tell you what all these good things that we're doing up here are gonna cost the Middletown taxpayers. So this is about 11,000 square feet. This is an old office building, a single-story building, that will require some work. We're planning on doing some cooperative work with the, both the police agency, Middletown Police Department, working with kids. The program, as you know, has expanded. The chief has really focused a lot on pop-up barbecues and things of that nature. And also, other city recreational offices are, could be into this building here. This is a gymnasium on the property, in a little community room right adjacent to the gymnasium. And along with some garages, this is the fore bay, which currently, we don't have adequate space for indoor storage for a lot of our equipment, along with another garage and the generator for the entire property. So the idea is, is that we would focus our energy and our resources in relocating the Middletown Recreation Program to this location. It is directly across from Maple Hill Park, so it's contiguous to Maple Hill Park. It's an absolute beautiful campus for what we're proposing to do. And all of this will cost us $1.00, and that's part of the beauty, and why we had to shift our attention away from the Kleiner project on the psychiatric center to this campus here, once it became available. I wanna thank the governor and his staff for listening for the last year as it went through the process, that this community has been a major focus of my administration and of you as a council, has been to expand opportunities for not only young children, but this is a place that all can enjoy. And Chris Brickerhoff and her staff will be taking a walk through the building with us. We have plans that we're gonna review about other opportunities to expand programs and expand offerings. So I think we offer so much now, I think there's an opportunity to offer so much more. And one question that keeps coming up is, what are we gonna do with the old school on Academy Avenue? And that is a big question. Preference one would be to sell it. As you know, it needs a lot of work. And we have had estimates on certain portions of it that, you know, it's in the millions of dollars in renovations that would be needed in order to maintain that building. It's not entirely handicap accessible. We've known that for years, but if we're gonna use upper floors in that building, it would have been requiring elevators. The gym floor needs to be replaced. But there's other, it's an old building, and we do have people interested in that. So we currently have the ABCD Head Start Program as a tenant, and both people who we are talking to are interested in retaining them as tenants in the building. So there would be some continuity and protection for them in the building also. And that will be an important part of how we proceed in getting, disposing of that property. But the opportunities here are, as you can see, are tremendous. And we have a resolution tonight that is authorizing me to apply to the state of New York Office of General Services for Transfer and Conveyance of this property. It's actually located in the Town of Walk Hill, across from the city, a city line. And, you know, if Town of Walk Hill was interested, we certainly would welcome the opportunity to annex the property and if they were concerned about any, providing of any services, as we normally do. But this is in conjunction with our reservoir, walking, hiking, and cross-country skiing, the expansion of Davich Park, and the improvements at Maple Hill Park, which should be ready by June, really will keep Chris and her staff kind of busy for the next several years. So I'm open to questions on the project. I have tried to keep you informed as we've moved along. We didn't know when it was gonna happen. It was, I can only give you the ideas of what we were going through with making arguments and making our case up in Albany, but obviously, we did okay, and they've accepted the city's proposal to make this a major focus of Recreation and Parks Program within the city of Middletown. So tomorrow, we'll be going to Albany, myself and Maria. We'll be joining a contingent from Orange County on the widening of Route 17, and looking to expedite monies for that program. We're giving testimony to a committee. I don't know which committee it is, but when I read through this all tonight, I'll know which committee it is. But we are giving testimony tomorrow up in Albany regarding the widening of 17. So other than that, I really have no additional question, or no additional comments, but if you have any questions, I certainly would be willing to address them right now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say thank you to you and to Maria. I'm not sure if the people in the city of Middletown realize what an accomplishment this is. It's a $1.00 price tag, and it's just going to enhance our recreation program and other things that, in cooperation with the police department. I know the mayor makes trips and has, he's constantly in contact with the governor's office, and this is the fruit of those labors. And Maria and your staff, thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions? Alderman Tobin, please.
To, again, this is a great deal. I mean, the possibilities are endless. Is it Middletown Water and Sewer connected?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Including the properties behind it already have water and sewer from Middletown. Also, the, I think it's the CP Center. And so, as a matter of fact, the water and sewer go right through, I believe, right through the property. Is that correct, Jacob? Yes, it goes right through the property, the corner property there. It's like an L shape. If you go back to, you see that lower, the wooded area on the left side? That is actually part of the frontage of, on Mount Hope Road, of the Start Center property.
Any other questions? Alderman Green.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor Maria. This is an amazing purchase for $1.00. If you need that dollar, I think I could find one.
Well, I was hoping to get it from Mr. Massey.
Oh, well, I certainly won't upstage Mr. Massey then. No, I do know, in the current building, I believe the fire police have a room.
Yes.
Would we be looking to relocate them?
Yeah, there's, we're looking to do a community room somewhere.
Okay.
They also have, they've requested other rooms, by the way.
Right.
They are one of the groups that's on the third floor, including the retired firemen, who it's very difficult to walk up three floors. You and I have a little trouble too. But the firemen, the retired firemen will certainly have some problems. But the longer building that we, let me see what I do, this one here. We do have some uses for it planned. It can't be announced at this time, but part of it will be for community room purposes.
Excellent.
And one of the other options with the old school is if we are unable to sell, we would entertain, and we're talking to one organization now related to a school, that we would have another tenant that would, if we lease out the entire building, but maintain the gym area for the different programs, and we'd have an additional gym space. The funding of the rental revenue would more than offset the capital costs that would have to go into putting an elevator in the building, for example, replacing the roof, replacing the gym floor. So we have two viable options on the old building. One is to maintain, improve, using additional rental revenue. The other is an outright sale, which is, to me, is my preference because it's one less burden of, A, an opportunity to get back on tax rolls, but B, an opportunity also to remove ourselves from being landlords, which we are not very good at. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson.
A quick question. Is this property gonna be on the tax rolls for Town of Walco?
No, no. It's been exempt, as a state agency in this city would be exempt because it's for public use.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
One question, Joe.
Hold on. Alderman Graham Kassoon.
The property's amazing, as is the campus and the whole ability to get it for $1.00. My only question I have is that, we know we run things like a teen center and things like that, that a lot of kids walk to. Will we be able to get that community to this facility, since it does lie across County Route 78?
Well, one thing is that we try to encourage kids not to walk to the teen center. We try to get families involved. We've had problems with certain programs in the city where you have 40, 50 kids at a function, and they all of a sudden empty out into a neighborhood, and that has created problems. When we had the teen center at the Old Mount Carmel Church, we actually stopped teen dances for that specific reason, and we changed the rules that would require any teen to attend a dance had to be accompanied by a parent, a guardian, or someone who signed them in and was picking them up, so we would prevent that mass exodus of kids out into the street late at night. But conversations that we've had with Chris and the department, it's similar. And the older members of the board, we only have one, Mr. Massey, Mr. Kleiner, might remember the old days of Middletown when the farms used to pick up at a designated spot of kids and bring them out to the farms to work. We can do something similar with our bus system, where we can say, you know, here's your designated spot, whether it be City Hall. your designated spot, whether it be City Hall, or whether it not be City Hall, and that it would require a round trip, that if you sign on to be brought out, you have to come out, so you're not leaving. And so, it's always, safety of kids is primary, not just access, but safety. So, we want to make sure that we put a program together that's going to address all of those issues. On the other hand, if we do lease the Academy Avenue building, there's the opportunity to run a program there also, because it would be a separate entrance that's currently used in the back of the property. But those plans will be developed, but safety first and convenience second.
Alderman Burr.
Yeah, do you have any timeframes on the A to B from the department going in first, before we do any other?
Yeah, incremental, this will be done in incremental stage. We're hoping to get into the property as soon as the closing takes place. It's subject to an environmental review. We do know that the property is a pretty clean property asbestos-wise for most of the buildings. You know, they were, this was a housing unit for 25 to 30 kids. So, the gym is the same thing. So, the state has maintained the buildings well. There is a possibility, and hopefully, we'll be able to use the ball field and at least the gymnasium by this summer for certain programs.
Any other questions?
And if Chris wants to elaborate, I don't know, Chris, if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, or you're fine with it?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. There's tons of opportunities.
Why don't you come up, Chris, and you can address up here. Somebody else had a question? Alderman Kleiner, okay.
Just very quickly, this was all state property, so, I mean, the Town of Walk Hill really is not involved in this at all.
No, no, this was state property, has been state property for years, yes. The city at, has always provided water and sewer service to it, because it is state property, but it's currently owned by the state and will be transferred. This is not like a lease. We will actually be getting ownership of the property with restrictions on use. You know, we can't sell it to a developer to build condominiums.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chris, why don't you come up and address some of the ideas that we had talked about?
Sure. This facility obviously gives us tons of potential and opportunities to do so many things with all age groups. So, that's a great thing. When our conversations first start, of course, you know, you're thinking safety and getting kids in the right spot safe, and there's a lot of things we can do with that, just like the mayor said with dances. Kids can only come if they got picked up at the end. And we could even set up something like that. The campus is set up where we can monitor that with the staff that we have. We have a bus. It was donated to us by Mid-City. You know, we can make the old center a pickup and drop-off spot. So, it'll be just slowly getting programs over there. We might put a camp right in there this year. I mean, we have a venture camp that we do where we're using a park and little people play time, and cheerleading camp and sports camp. So, we need facilities. Our programs are getting bigger, and this is not going to need a whole lot of maintenance. And the fact of the matter that we can share this with the police department, that's another incredible asset with just public relations and safety, because we're just a little bit farther from everybody else. So, we're on board with it. We think it's going to be great opportunities. The staff, our recreation commission, will all be discussing it, and we'll stay in communication with you of what our plans are. But it, to me, it's very exciting. It's just another great thing that's going to be happening for this community in the next few years, and it's just amazing what's happening here.
All right, thank you.
And we're also looking to, no, I don't want your money. We're looking to expand some of the parking, obviously, on the campus, and it's, there's nothing but good that's going to come out of this.
Mr. Mayor, would you do me a favor? Take that off the easel. Those people are blocked out. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't think I have anything else. I did make a note on the agenda for something, and I think it was the Engine 1 issue, the, I think the chief was asking for an amendment to it, and, okay, that was the only other issue I had. Okay, thank you so much.
Remarks of Alderman. Alderman Burr.
Thank you. First time, my condolences to the Fody family. Pat was a good friend of mine also, and a great employee for the city for over 40 years. What could we do? A dollar for that kind of facility is unbelievable, and I think it's just going to work great for all our community and everybody else. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Alderman John Francois.
And I also agree, this is a great job, Mayor, on this purchase, and I also like to send my thoughts and prayers to the Fody family. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. Patsy was, he was a character, he was unbelievable, and what, now there's no one who knows where all the valves are in our water distribution system. But he, what the mayor said, that he always had the best interest of Middletown at heart, and he had lots of ideas, so he will really be missed. So, definitely my condolences to the family and to the city for Patsy. If you go to the Middletown website, and at top, and select community, and go down, you'll find municipal ID. And that's where the specifics on the program, that's where the forms are that you can fill out, so that we'll start. 9:00 AM on Wednesday, March 13th, and there may be, you know, a few little hitches as it smoothes out, but I'm sure it's going to be a great thing. So, thank you, John. I also, on Monday, went to the meeting that Maria and Gracia from Congressman Maloney's office had arranged with the, and this is the United States Postal Inspection Service, they're the enforcement arm of the post office. But we had, and I want to thank Maria and Jenna from Congressman Maloney's office, they had a meeting with the Middletown Postmaster and the Newburgh Postmaster and their supervisor. I spoke with the postmaster today. So, they were explaining about that new mailbox, and they are very proud of that box, because it has really proven to be theft-proof, and you watch and you get educated. We're going to try and maybe put this on the Neighborhood Watch page, but this is a handout. They gave us Neighborhood Watch, how to protect against mail theft and identity theft. And what they explained is that the mail theft has become such a sophisticated operation, and it was spreading from the Bronx across New York City and the counties, and spreading into Orange County and such. And yes, they have had mail thefts from that box. And what we, and so, they've really designed a lot of fail-safe things where people can't be fishing out checks, and apparently what they have is they take the check and then have a solution that washes off the ink. So, it washes off the date and the amount, but it leaves everything else, and so then they just fill it out to themselves, you know, like everything else. So, what we have asked, and a lot of people have asked them, and the new postmaster will ask, is that they design a curbside box, they call it a snorkel box, or the one with the chute, it's more convenient. So, that they design a box like that that is also theft-proof. So, they are working on that, but in the meantime, that box is there to stay. They may remove those cement posts, because people have been running into them, trying to get close enough to that box. But they are working on it, and if people really have a problem mailing a letter, you can always call the 1-800, you know, ask, you can find, I forget the number exactly, but to ask the post office to, it'll help you with getting your mail either to the carrier if you have a specific problem with it. But they are working on it, and I had no idea how sophisticated those operations were, so that's it.
Alderman Ramkassun.
Good evening. In my tenure here on the board, I got to interact with Mr. Fody a number of times, whether it be at the podium, he stopped me after a meeting, his letters of my mailbox, but agreed, he'll be missed. His character, his feedback on everything we did here, and his knowledge of the city, it will be missed. So, my condolences to the family. As for this rec campus, this is amazing. I mean, we have a rec department that's just expanding exponentially on a day-to-day basis. Our programs expand, and having been able to do that confined to Academy Avenue has been nothing short of miraculous, but this is a huge opportunity for our kids, and it's exciting. And great job, Mayor, on making all that happen for a dollar. So, yay, Middletown again. That's all I have tonight.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. I want to thank Alderman Kleiner for clarifying the post office situation. Nothing like firsthand information to quell the troops. Hope Not Handcuffs, sounds like a great initiative. Thank you, Alderman Tobin, for bringing that to our attention. I came late to the party for Mr. Fody. I certainly was enamored with his unorthodox style of presenting information. I did take a chance or two to meet with him privately and get an in-service tour of things. And I agree with the mayor, as unorthodox as he was, he always had the best interest of our city at heart. As far as this initiative with this land acquisition, I think between the state of the city and this incident, it is proof that the mayor has remarkable intuitive-
That may be Pat.
You mentioned the mayor?
Maybe I should retract.
Might be your mic.
There you go.
You have remarkable intuitive sense to identify initiatives and bring them to fruition, and this is no poor example of that. We thank you, and it was a long process. And Chris will take the ball and run with it, no doubt, and watch what happens. Thank you both.
Alderman Green.
Okay, thank you. First off, you know, growing up, I have some memories of Pat Fody, especially, I remember he was quite involved in, when they did car shows down in the parking lot over here. So, I remember running around those as a kid. So, my condolences definitely to the Fody family. Monday, March 11th, we will have a second work constituents' meeting here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. We hope you can attend. Jerry and I will both be here. Do want to thank the DPW for their work in the last snowstorm. You know, I woke up, drove out like it didn't even happen. So, I've heard wonderful things from our constituents. So, Commissioner Tewill, thank you, and thank your staff for all the hard work that goes into it. If you haven't seen the new Engine 1, and it's sitting down when it's at Central Firehouse down there, it's an amazing machine, and certainly we wish the department well with it. And, you know, it's something that we know will be put to good use and is definitely needed, and we certainly wish well the old engine as it goes to Hancock Fire Department. So, that's a great thing. Yeah, Alderman Johnson, I just want to, you know, basically echo what you said. Between the state of the city and between this tonight, you know, with the acquisition of land, there's just so many opportunities coming to Middletown. These next few years are going to be amazing. You know, the parks, we're now, with this, gaining more ball fields and that, there's just so much opportunity coming. So, I'm very excited to see what happens. And also, the Hope Not Handcuffs program, I just want to say that that's a great program in terms of outreach to those who really need the help and maybe didn't know where to go before, feared that the only way that they were going to get help was to be arrested. So, we certainly wish that program well, and that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin.
So, I'm excited to get my municipal ID, so hopefully I'll be online the day it opens up. DPW, great job on the roads. I mean, compared to other communities I've driven around, once I get to Middletown, the streets are clean. It's, you guys do a great job. Hats off to them. My condolences to the Fody family. And if you're hungry this weekend, the community service clubs, there's a lot going on. The Kiwanis are doing a pancake breakfast, 7 to 12. The Lions Club, which I'm part of, we have a spaghetti dinner, 4 to 7:00 PM, at the Mason's Lodge, and I believe there's a corned beef dinner.
Up at the Elks Club.
At the Elks Club. So, if you're hungry this weekend, there's plenty of opportunity to help the community, and you don't need to cook, straight through the day. Thanks to the chief for the Hope Not Handcuffs. I'm glad we're doing our part to, in Middletown, to address the opioid epidemic that's ravaging the nation. And lastly, good luck to the basketball team. It's exciting that we're in it again this year. Thank you.
The Kiwanis, it's the 66th Annual Pancake Breakfast, and it's 7:00 AM to 12 noon at the high school. Patsy Fody and I go back probably over 50 years. We had our ups, we had our downs. He was certainly been missed. I doubt there was anyone had any more knowledge of the water department than Patsy. And just for your information, I'm not sure that how many people are aware of it, but Tony Capazella, who used to sit here, was an Alderman at one time, is now the chairman of the planning board. Patsy was his father-in-law, so if you see Tony, you might want to say something. Unfinished business?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Ramkassun, to accept an award in the amount of $11,792 given to us by the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for the use in the police traffic services.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Ramkassun. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. We'll need a resolution to, sorry, a motion to amend this resolution.
So, moved by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green.
Okay, so, the amended resolution was sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green, and this is resolution that when deemed surplus, the Engine 1 will be donated to the Hancock Fire Department.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
We're voting on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment.
Right.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All right, nail the resolution.
Which I just read, the resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson.
Sponsor of the resolution?
Yeah.
That's what we're going to do now.
No, you did the amendment.
The amendment, yeah.
Mr. President.
I thought we had a sponsor of the amendment, Alderman Johnson, and seconded by Alderman Green.
We're entangled in the procedural weeds here.
I'm running this meeting, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate if you would, if you would, if you would, I would appreciate if you would remain silent. Where do we stand, Jim? I may be wrong.
Point of order?
Robert is rolling into his grave.
You really, you really need to make the motion first, then you amend it, and vote on the amendment, and then vote on the amended.
Okay, that's what we're doing.
Wow.
Uh-oh, John. You said to follow your lead. But since I'm running, it is my mistake. Let's start all over again. I need a motion on, I mean, I mean a-
You have to put it on the floor.
To amend.
To amend. Alderman Johnson?
So moved.
Seconded by Alderman Green, to amend.
Discussion.
Now.
Vote.
Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I need a motion-
To accept as amended.
Okay. Alderman Johnson?
So moved to accept as amended, Mr. Chair.
Alderman Green?
Second.
Now, let's do, any comments, questions? Yes?
Yes, because I had a few questions about this asked of me, and I thank Chief Lewis for his explanation, and it's true that when we've had surplus fire trucks, it basically have gone for scrap or less, and so, if we have a small city that really can use it, I think it's a much better fate for Engine 1, so I will support it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Ramkassun, to approve the proposal from Lehman and Getz for preparation of the final plans and engineering details for the design of the Henry Union Street Park and parking lot, and approve funds for the project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Ramkassun. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?[1797.98] Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Burr, to authorize the payment to CPL for the sum of $55,000 for services described under preliminary planning in a previous authorized proposal from Resolution 280-15.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Burr. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Put it on the floor.
I'm looking for a motion to amend the resolution. Do I have a motion by Alderman Green and seconded by Alderman Johnson?
I think you have to have the motion on the floor, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like me to come up and help you?
At this point, probably wouldn't hurt. All right, we have a motion on the floor to amend.
No.
Oh, we don't?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to put the resolution on the floor as written.
Would you read it?
Okay, it's a resolution to approve the two-lot subdivision for 10 to 22 Railroad Avenue.
Motion to amend that resolution.
First you have a sponsor and a second.
We have to sponsor the second first. Or you already have that, John, that's on your list.
We do.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Did you have a second?
I thought Alderman Green seconded it.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're getting there.
No, we need to amend it now.
Now we have a motion to amend.
You need to put the resolution on the floor, which you do. Now you need to identify what the amendment is-
And vote.
And then get a sponsor to the amendment, a second to the amendment, and then a vote on the amendment.
So we have to read the amendment now?
That's correct.
Yes. In its entirety.
In its entirety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm glad I came this evening.
Well-
He's not.
I'd like to respond, but so am I, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is the amended resolution. Whereas the applicant Hudson Transit Lines Newell soon submitted a proposal for a two-lot subdivision for properly located at 10 to 22 Railroad Avenue, Middletown, New York, known as Middletown Tax Parcel Section 31 Block 2, Lot 18.2 and Section 31 Block 2 and Lot 20.2. And whereas the purpose of the subdivision to facilitate the bus terminal operations at that site, and whereas the applicant has complied with all the applicable requirements for final subdivision approval, and whereas public hearing was held on March 5th, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that the common counsel of the city of Middletown, that final subdivision approval be and hereby granted to the application to subdivide the property located at Section 31 Block 2, Lot 18.2 and Section 31 Block 2, Lot 20.2, as shown on the map entitled Middletown Transportation Center, prepared by Felinger Engineering, dated March 5th, 2019 and filed in the office of the Middletown Common Council Clerk. And be it further resolved that this approval is conditioned upon Hudson Transit accepting the obligation to plow, shovel, and maintain the easement area on the east side of the ticket building from Railroad Avenue parallel to the building to city property line for the duration of the license, whenever or not Hudson Transit continues to be reimbursed under the capital cost of reimbursement or similar agreement. And be it further resolved that this approval is conditioned upon Hudson Transit accepting the obligation to indemnify the city and its officers, employees, agents to the fullest extent permitted by law from the against any and all liability, obligations, losses, claims, and damages whatsoever with respect to the, for said easement. And be it further resolved, the common counsel, that the applicant is directed to submit all necessary documents to the office of the county clerk to file and record the subdivision within sixty days of this resolution.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept as amended.
I'd like to second.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Sullivan Kleiner?
Thank you, Alex.
Any other comments or questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?[1643.71]